You see this? The city just bought, so I look at some of the things. You know, you don't know about renting. You know, what it's worth. It's just a shell. There's really minimal heaps. There's enough to keep us out of the place. Electric cables, no bathrooms. They're outside. There are also just a shell. They rented it already for weddings. And I think, tell me, do you have anything to add? I said, oh, I think you're welcome. You're ready to go? So it's just a little, oh gosh, they, they just started it out or something like that. They're going. They said they hope that already made money. And the lifts are outside. Oh my goodness. God, they're killing me. So, yeah. I was hoping I made a little, you know, guess what? This stuff, you know. Yeah, that's, that's why I was like, so what do you guys got? She goes, it's just like, the building is, it's just the shell. She's like, we just need minimal heat in there. Just electric cables, you know? Then when she told me it's not bad, I was like, who would rent that? I'm not going to be able to, oh, I gotta get a lift off. You know? Yeah, and then she said, you just let it go. Good. They're done. They're done. Plug it along, she said. And it's not cheap. It wasn't cheap. I mean, it's also made with plastic that they were working on. You know, I kind of looked at it. It's like three or four hundred bucks depending on how many hours. Because now it's all, it's like, 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 it's[164.19]
Good evening. So, before you, on the first line of agenda one, is the reports from 2013 for our overall runs for the year. You need to take special note, on the paperwork it says 208, it was actually 207. In our reporting system, we have a structure where there was damage to a neighboring house, so we had to do a separate report and I managed to cover it, so it was the reporting deal that through the state that we can't get figured out. So, our actual call number was 207 for last year, which is down from the previous year, which was a record year for us. However, over a 10-year average, we're actually up by about 20 calls yet, going up the average. So, we're trending up as we move forward, so. And it is a breakdown, if you go through and look, broken down by days of the week. Another page is average turnout per call. And then, the other one is situation report, which breaks it down by a month of what the calls were. In that recording part of it, if you have questions after the meeting, we'd be happy to explain some of the breakdowns. Any questions?
Where is the average turnout per call?
That would be on page 22. It's 13, and we're sitting at 27 firefighters, so we're getting half the department, and that's, you know, even taking during the day when we've only got four or five guys showing up. The nighttime obviously picks it up, but, you know, that's what we have available during the day. We have a lot, just like any other town. Every town does a different situation during the day. Next on the list, I'm here to like to ask to purchase up to another 10 sets of gear as we approach the new calendar, or end of the new calendar year. Last year, we replaced 10 sets of gear that was 10 years or older. Now, obviously, we are over the 10-year mark, and it's showing it's wearing a tear, so we'll replace another 10 sets. Eleven years ago, we were fortunate enough to get that femogram, got us 30 sets of gear, and now it's all due at the same time. We're trying to stretch that so that in the future, we don't have to make the big acquisitions all in one year. So, I got a price quote of Emergency Response Solutions, that's Sir Jeff Carlson, he's from Polkato, local firefighter. The price difference is $2.57 from last year. It's the same specifications, everything, so if we get the approval to purchase this gear, it'll look the same, a little bit cleaner, but the same, so it'll still be matching. I did not have a total number of sets to purchase, that's why I worked it up to 10 sets, and not any more than that.
Will you complete the whole thing?
No, next year would be the completion, so it'll be stretched over three years. So, as we move forward, it'll lessen the burden of cost, so trying to stretch it as we go. Last year, we replaced the stuff that was the worst, and now this year, we'll replace the stuff that's next in mind, and next year, it'll be the same, so.
Penitent law 17, 22, 95%.
Correct, and they'll probably be shipping it out, so that, I believe with the new laws, we are now totally tax exempt, as the city, correct?
This depends on the item, but this is tax exempt.
Anyway, so, but, we should represent it, but.
I'll make the motion that the fire department go ahead and purchase up to 10, um, firefighter sets.
Second. Motion by Michelle, second by Mark, from the Office of Fire Department. Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carry, five vote.
Thank you. One quick thing on the other agenda, I apologize, I talked to Wake or Beat Up and Custom Fire last Monday on the truck. Everything's been submitted to Spartan, which is the builder of our chassis, they're waiting on confirmation back from them, they're working on getting us into the build schedule. We're looking to have a pre-construction meeting beginning of February to finalize our drawings, and then we're still looking at a June-July delivery date, so we're still on track for that yet. We went through and got an equipment list together, I'm looking at four or five items to submit that to, to get bids for the loose equipment on it, so I'll be bringing that here in the next couple of months for approval, so that's where we're at with the rest of that time.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, then, move into Personnel Committee, update Mark Crotcher.
All right, and last Personnel Committee, we talked about, there's been talk about amnesty for our next cleanup day, because there has been talk about proverbial couch in the backyard with the TVs sitting on top of it that never get moved, year after year, and they're still there. So, it was a concern that, that maybe the fire department is something that's going to get in their way, so I had asked the fire department at our, at our fire department that maybe they would be involved or in helping to get that stuff, if we get it out to the curb. And there was also some talk about involving the scouts and talent. There was also talk about our, our legal newspaper, and, Mark, do you remember the numbers on that as far as what it costs us to run our?
It's about, the Wright County Journal Press runs about a third or more than the public, that, they're, I don't have the specific numbers, maybe ask the numbers, I think we're going to talk about that more with.
Okay, clear. Okay, so, we talked about that, so, Council, you can give more information on that, it's considerable, so, we want to initiate, we got a new agenda. It was also stated that because it's a committee of the council, the Finance Committee should be posted, rather than you and I just finding convenient time to book their life, so from now on, we are going to post that and have it at a specific time. That's, that's on my hand.
Um, we discussed the community center updates, we will then, word from one of the construction companies as to an estimate, an estimation on bids for updating the community center kitchen, we just got that back today?
This morning.
This morning, yeah. So, we'll get more discussion on that thing later. Godlike stations we brought up, and from that, so, it's more the amnesty cleanup day.
Is that it? Anybody got any questions? Then we'll move on to Public Works, Authorization to Hire Maintenance Worker 1.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. On page 25, your packet memo was drafted as a review of application and interview process for maintenance worker one that was vacated back in November. We had 61 applications for the position. We conducted five initial interviews and one second interview. A lot of the applications, it took about three weeks to review them all, and with a conditional offer presented to Dan Menzel, conditional offer of employment offered to Dan Menzel upon City Council approval tonight. Dan is well qualified, holds ASC certification in mechanics, master mechanic, snowplow experience with a township in Wright County, and also street and park maintenance with a city in Wright County also.
I'm sorry, I'm looking for a motion to approve the hiring of Dan Menzel at step one, or the approved step one rate of 1650 an hour.
Where, where does Dan live?
Dan lives in Buffalo.
Right in town, or?
I'm not real sure where.
Okay, well.
Now, this guy's got diesel mechanic experience and stuff like that. Ooh. That is correct. He's ASC certified master diesel mechanic.
I'll make the motion that the fire department hires Dan Menzel as a regular one, work for the position at 1650 an hour.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ben. How do you vote?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Motion carry, five vote.
Thank you. Second item on the, didn't quite think into the list, I was going to wait until February to start looking at this, but this afternoon, I figured no better times than the present. As you know, we got two vehicles in Public Works Department that are 20 years old or more. We've got a Ford one-ton dump truck that is, we had the red flag, out of service last summer, I had Roy was the last one driving. And we've also got a 92 GMC that is not far behind. We plan on keeping that for summer maintenance kits to drive around watering flowers, weeding gardening, weeding gardens and things like that. When you're out to purchase a generally used vehicle, and it's hard for me to negotiate with a dealer to hold a vehicle for three weeks for council approval, so I'm asking if we could get pre-authorization up to the budget of $20,000 for this year for the purchase of that vehicle. I'll make a motion to authorize that, up to the $20,000 budget.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mark, second by Ben, to prepare a vehicle for Public Works. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carry, five vote. Thank you. Okay, City Council monthly time record for December. On my time sheet, I went, we went to J and B meets, which was really interesting, how they done their products and everything, and then we went to Pratt, Caff Pattern, was really interesting, how stuff was being designed and milled, and how their fire thing works for their melting of aluminum and all of that stuff. Highway 12 development, we're waiting on a few answers for, a few things for planning yet. Okay, we just got an afternoon, it's okay, we'll go to business, open gym, show out.
Um, we had a meeting this morning with Kim and Todd, and Sheila, and Lydia, that contract is renewed for open gym to continue, we've changed the dates, we do the limited Sunday that we had out there, just because it wasn't much participation, now we're now on Mondays and Wednesdays, from six to eight. We're just going to run until like mid, I don't remember what the date was, sometime in May, maybe?
Fourteenth is the last, Wednesday, May fourteenth is the last.
We're hoping to kind of get it more, a little more structured, so that when the supervisors that are in there will direct the kids as to what events would be going on, whether it's a basketball game going on, a dodgeball game going on, or whatever, a little more structured.
The cost, the cost will be $1,085, so if the City Council wants to make a motion to approve that, that would be in order.
I'll make the motion to continue, all of the open gym is $1,085.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, second by Lloyd, for $1,000 worth?
Eighty-five.
$1,085 for open gym. Ben, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carry, five vote. Okay, we'll move on to new business, 2014 fee schedule, Mark Swanson.
I highlighted, I highlighted the changes in the fee schedule. Sewer access will go up $100, that is, there's a motion later on in the packet that would be to increase our sewer access for this sanitary sewer system, that would be paid by a developer. Stormwater, which you approved at the last council meeting in December, increased 50 cents, and 30, 60, 90 gallon garbage are decreased 50 cents. Those are the only changes on the fee schedule.
I'll make the motion into the, the, or in point one, if that's not wrong.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ben, to schedule fee 2014, I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion carry, five vote. 2014 appointments, Mark Swanson?
I just, there's, yeah, last year, I have last year's in here, and on 2014, I highlighted those offices that need to be filled. I also highlighted the official newspaper because of the cost difference between the Wright County Journal Press and the Herald Journal, and if you want specific numbers on that, I mean, when you said sheet, that was. We would recommend that because of the cost, say, it'd be the Herald Journal.
Can we talk to Wendy about that now? Is that what you have to do? Everybody?
I only brought a couple, like, one or two items. I know, I went back and looked, one of the, one of the things that we have to post every year, or print every year in the paper in the legal notices, is our water report. And in 2008, when we were with the Journal Press, our water report was $485.67 to publish. In 2013, that exact same water report with the Herald Journal was $220. So, it's like half of what the Journal Press is, I don't know what the cost would be now for the Journal Press, but the water report alone, that's one of the numbers that I just pulled out, because I know that's exactly the same for year to year. I can tell you our, our legal audit that we have to publish in the spring, in the Herald Journal ran 700 and, around $750 this last year. So, with the Journal Press, I would guess it would be well over 1,000. So, just something if you want to think about that, that's why we were with the Herald Journal before, for the legal notices, because of the cost.
Do you know how many subscribers there are each month?
I don't know.
It's pretty, the last time we checked, it was pretty similar, they were both around 83, 87.
Would our recorder happen to know? Would you happen to know?
How many have?
Yeah.
No, I do not.
You know.
You would have to talk to them about the price, but I know in the past, they have, I think the Herald Journal also does the county because they underbid everybody.
Right.
Yeah.
And several papers have stopped bidding for the county because they know they aren't going to get it.
Yeah. Why do we have such a difference here?
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, I hope we can check into it a little more, Lloyd, and see what's the difference.
Yeah, I would say table this, I would.
Table it, tell, find out more.
Yeah, because, you know, if there's more Wright County papers, the city pays the goal of the most publicized.
It pays to double, because it was $200 to go on a, down Herald, or down $400 to get a couple more subscribers, I don't see it paying up.
Well, just public, that may work, isn't it?
Right, but we're doubling the cost.
Another way we could do it too, we could put it into the newsletter.
Some things we have to legally publish in the paper.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
The publication does not.
A lot, a lot of people in the city don't know what's going on. The postal newsletter is what, three, over $300?
Yeah.
Per newsletter, too. So, it's pretty obvious it's a cost issue, I guess if you find out subscription rates, and it's close, I would say within 100, I would recommend that we go with cheaper. It's okay, would I know? No, it's up to the rest, I guess, if I, I. Well, did you want to check on that? What? Yeah, I, I really want to do this. Okay, well, then, how about if we just table it out the next?
Nice, Council.
So, there, so you bring us your information.
Okay, then we've got the 2014 appointments. Okay, for what I got down here, Michelle Otto, the acting mayor, Board of Adjustments, Corey DeWitt, Doug Loring, Chamber of Commerce, I got.
Who's the council member?
Huh?
Who's the council member on Board of Adjustment?
We'll get Corey DeWitt and Doug Loring on Board of Adjustments.
I need a council member.
I don't know if we had one on the last one.
I, I believe I was on the last one. I think, I think you were. Yeah, I was on, I was on the last one. Page 43, at the bottom. Very bottom.
Okay, Ben, sorry about that. And then we've got Michelle Otto, Community Education Representative, and Economic Development Authority, we tabled that until the next meeting. Emergency Management, Roy Henry, Matt Menard, Fire Department, Jason Shapens, and Mark Crotcher, who's liaison, Park for Recreation liaison, Michelle Otto. And Personnel Committee, we've got Mark Crotcher, Michelle Otto. Planning and normal liaison, I got Roy Henry. Finance Committee, Lloyd Johnson, and Ben. Utility Emergency Board, Roy Henry and Sean Dirks, Montrose Days liaison, Michelle Otto. And Official Depositories, the Citizens State Bank, Waverly, Klein Bank, Wells Fargo, Crow River State Bank, State Bank Adelmo, Elk River State Bank, LMC, Florida Empan, Northland Security. And Official Newspaper, we'll table that until the next council meeting, Lloyd comes up with whatever reason to find out.
What did you have for Chamber of Commerce?
Me. And that's about it. If anybody's got any questions?
There, there has been a discussion about changing the time for the Finance Committee.
Okay.
And that was on, again, when was that meeting?
We talked about setting a date.
I put it on here as the quarterly, the fourth Thursday at 9:00 AM, but whatever works for you guys, I just put that on there.
Yeah, so. I guess, Thursday at 9:00 AM. Sure.
Is that what you want?
So, I'll take you up, man.
So, is everybody satisfied with that? Any changes, if anything?
You know, being a little newer here at the council, and kind of trying to get my feet under me, and get involved in a few more activities here, I wouldn't mind being on the liaison for Montrose Days.
You got it.
Okay.
So, do we need to vote on that?
I have one thing, though, on the Montrose Days ones, I don't go, I'm, I'll still say, because there are different organizations, yes, I probably.
That's right.
Yeah, because there's, there's got to be, there's got to be three.
And in a small community, you know, there's that crossover sometimes, and you'll be there representing your organization, and they'll be there representing the others.
So, we need a motion of appointments.
I mean, a motion to schedule appointments, or?
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, second by Michelle, for appointments for 2014. Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, and motion carry, five vote. LCFO training for Anna Carlson, we'll be attending the day. Need a motion for that?
No, that's informational.
Okay. And we can move on to the newly elected and experienced official conferences.
I would like to add to this resolution for the, those of us that are elected, experienced elected, I can't remember exactly what, they, what, the fire chiefs could be allowed to attend that meeting too, because it's a lot of good informational training as far as.
Mark?
Yes?
Did you make that the officers?
Same, where are you?
Because, because I got two captains that might be interested, and if you just say chiefs, that would exclude the captains. Because I got two captains that might be interested and if you just say chiefs, that would exclude the captains.
All right, so that, that would be.
The officers.
Yeah, okay. I think the officers, do we add that, that resolution would, would council consider?
I think it'd be good. I learned a lot from that one I was in.
That's basically the one that you were in last year is the one that, that they and I believe Lloyd and Michelle and myself would be attending. Right. That's like a movie.
Maybe just.
It's a work.
January thirty-first.
Page forty-five, Michelle.
Page forty-first and thirty-first. That'd be a Friday, Saturday.
What is the cost on that?
That's just, um, that's hotel. That's the conference.
So then we need a motion to have to firemen to attend that.
Just to have the resolution.
A resolution for that?
There wasn't a resolution, Ben. It's a motion to allow all council members and fire department officers
Yes.
to attend the newly elected experienced officials conference.
On that, last, last year when we went, I think nine of us, all five of us went, was it nine? And each of us had a room and to me that it's not really cost efficient to do that when you have double beds in the rooms. When whoever decides to make it, would they be willing to share them on the same conference seat? Like the, I don't know. Other like what, two thousand, about one day up there?
It's one day.
Six, eight, six, seven hundred dollars in hotels. If you cut it half, hopefully.
Yeah, I think everybody.
It's one oh-nine, one oh-nine plus tax.
Everybody but Ben will be out of there Saturday at noon when Ben passes the.
Four.
Yeah.
I'll get over it.
Well, the only thing about that is that what, um, the reservations would have to meet pretty soon, so then we have to do a bunch of shuffling and phone tech to see who's going and.
The experienced officials is two twenty-five. It's the newly elected is three fifteen.
Right, but I'm concerned the hotel cost.
Right, I was just clarifying the.
Right.
Conference cost. The room's one oh-nine plus tax.
It's never be a house of five hundred dollars, um, fifteen, uh, two, but that's up to you guys.
Good big boy, I can share them.
Yeah, that's why. Yeah, that's, that takes a lot because you want to get to your own rooms.
I'm not going, so it's just up to the boys. So. Well, I'm just saying because last year, I mean, I went and I had a double bed, two beds. It doesn't make sense, which I, I mean, I don't know, I usually think we're all failing here. I mean, it's one night, so. So I'm going to motion to approve, um, council members to attend the newly elected and experienced officials conference at the end of January.
And fire department.
And fire departments, um.
Officers.
Yes, not just the fire departments.
Second that.
Michelle. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Mark. How do you vote?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, Mark?
Aye.
Motion carried by vote.
So there was no action regarding the hotel rooms, so we'll leave that up to the individuals to decide how they want to do that. Is that correct?
Yep.
Would you have to have a, would you craft an E and a, for, so that you can get the information?
I'd say this would have been better. Uh, I think the meeting doesn't see what the cost was.
The seven plus two guaranteed permits.
So we missed that.
And we'll move on to IMD resolution twenty-fourteen dash oh-one for de-certify tax increase in finance district number four dash one.
So, just to back up for a second, get the fire department and all the council get to bar by end of week?
Sure. Yeah. It'd be nice if I knew so on like Friday at the latest I could make those reservations, so.
So by Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
That okay, Daisy?
Yeah.
Okay, then we can move on to IMD. No, IMD.
E.
IMD.
I'm looking for approval of the resolution, um, twenty-fourteen dash oh-one. We have one TIF district remaining in the city, which is TIF district number four. It was the TIF district involving the Meadowbrook cottages development. We actually terminated or dissolved, um, the developers agreement about a year ago because Hirsch Ventures, I think, was bankrupt or was no longer involved in the Meadowbrook cottages. And the TIF district has been open that long or since then and there's no activity in there. We're not, it was a pay-as-you-go TIF district, which means he had to pay his taxes in order to get the money back from the TIF. And he has been paying the taxes, so we haven't been giving any money back to the developer. So, um, our TIF expert, Shelley Eldridge that works for Gellers, suggested that we just decertify the district, close it out. We sent the money back to the county for them to redistribute to the county and to the school district and to the city. So we'll get that back in January. So that TIF district would be ended and we wouldn't have any more TIF districts. We would end up having to do one more report for that district, which would be do, I think they're due like by August first and then that would all be done too. So we wouldn't have any more expenses within that district. If somebody did decide to buy that, that land or to start development on that, that, um, in Meadowbrook cottages and they needed TIF funding to help them, we could always start another TIF district. That way they would get the full extent of the district, the full number of years rather than what's left of this one. So.
So we need a motion to adopt resolution twenty-fourteen dash oh-one.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Ben to adopt resolution twenty-fourteen. Johnson, how you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carried by vote. Okay, we got annual clerks and finance officers conference, if anyone in March. Mark?
No, I was just informational, just to let you know.
Okay, and we got league of cities, league of Minnesota cities insurance trust, Montrose, you see the dividend of seven thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars. We got resolution twenty-fourteen dash oh-two increasing the amount of sewer access charge. Mark?
I touched on this briefly earlier.
Right.
Um, the, the city has two sewer funds. One is the wastewater treatment plant and one is sanitary sewer system. And sixteen hundred dollars from the SAC, the sewer access charge goes to the wastewater treatment plant and the balance goes to the sanitary sewer system. We, as our payments for debt for some of the projects in town has increased slightly, we need that extra hundred dollars to go into our sanitary sewer system to make that debt payment. That hundred dollars is paid, the SAC is paid by the developer. It's paid on the building, on the building permit. So it's for when a new, um, house or commercial building is constructed, they're charged that SAC fee. So it's not paid by the general resident, but it's paid by the developer, the builder.
I'm going to motion then to adopt resolution twenty-fourteen dash two.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Lloyd to adopt resolution twenty dash fourteen oh-two. Ben, how you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carried by vote. And we want, uh, item. Aye. Hundred one twenty-seven for council meeting, on the twenty-seventh, January.
I'm just curious if we're holding that meeting. I don't have any particular business for that meeting unless the city council does.
That, would that be the meeting for, um?
League of cities.
No, um, park meeting. The other, like, there's a problem with the pandemic.
Yes.
We want to go on to January. I'm ready to go down to the meeting.
I say we'll do it.
You agree?
I need a motion for that. I'm going to motion to remove the January twenty.
Seven.
Twenty-seven meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Ben. I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion carried by vote. And we want the item J. S U.
Um, I just have some concerns. I, I think, um, as a city, we need to, we have spending limits here within the city that, um, I think are a little excessive. And attending the last couple of staff meetings. Our spending limit right now is at two thousand daily, monthly, monthly.
For myself and for Sean.
Each?
Yes.
Mark? Jason's in on that.
Jason's in on that too.
Yeah.
But Jason has a two thousand dollar limit also.
Yeah, he had a pump last year that he couldn't pay for, so.
Right.
Right. Basically, we're going to just halve it.
Right. Um. I think what, of course, kind of, this, this needs to be adjusted. Due to the fact that in the last couple of staff meetings that I've attended, um, some of the things haven't been discussed. It keeps coming back while we really, that's within our spending limit, so we can go ahead and do that. I think everything that we spend our money on should be brought up in front of full council and the public. So, um. I don't know how we would go about changing the spending limits without lumping everybody into it. But it, it is a concern of mine that we have and it's been a concern that we all have, you know, for, for many months. Is that some things are, like I said, in, in our staff meetings, we've had, um. I keep getting responses within our spending limits, so we can go ahead and purchase whatever is discussed. So I'm going to make a motion to change the spending limits from two thousand for in, in, I don't want to lump everybody into it because I don't, I don't see Jason very often. That's all separate and different, but within our city, within city hall. Down from two thousand dollars down to a thousand dollars.
Just out of curiosity, with the expenditures that you have in particular in mind that you.
Well, we, we discussed, um, more dog waste purchasing of that. At something, so ten more are going to be purchased because it's within the spending limit. Um, the open gym, it is on the agenda here that that's within the spending limit and these things are going to be, you know, it was, they're discussed in a personnel meeting. And so I think with, before we give the comments that it's within the spending limit, it needs to be addressed in front of full council. And, and the taxpayers need to know where the money is going.
So you're saying if it's like a higher dollar a month, then it should come before us?
Yeah.
Would it be possible instead of changing the spending limit, if there's a concern during the, during the, uh, personnel meeting that, that, then you could direct staff to put that on the agenda?
We could direct it, absolutely, yeah.
For our council?
We could do that, I guess. I mean, it's just my concern that a lot of things just keep getting, um, discussed and purchased without full council and public knowledge.
Yeah, but the only thing we're going to have, like if Sean is going to need something right away, we got to have it right away.
That we.
We can wait for a council meeting.
Right, right. To do it. So if, if there's something that needs to be done right here, be done tomorrow, now he's got to wait until February before he can spend that money.
So then my question, the only questions I have is still like, when we're in a personnel meeting, which we hold twice a month, it's the opposite of the council meeting. So if, say, um, the dog waste, we'll use that as an example, because I have it for. Um, and are you okay with us approving that purchase?
The dog waste things?
Or that's just, or the open gym?
Open gym, yeah, I'm fine.
But that's where I want to make sure is that you're okay with us going ahead and approving spending this, that, or it's on this dollar a month?
On some things, yes. You know, if, if tomorrow Sean has a breakdown and he has to spend two thousand fifty dollars or, or a thousand fifty dollars to repair, are you saying he's got to wait another month before we can do it? I just, I mean, yes, I see some, you know, maybe, maybe some things that, um, things over, you know, say over a thousand dollars that are spent, you know, because it's within the limits, maybe that is brought up. Hey, during this past month, this was done and this is how much money was spent on it. I think that might be, you know, ju- just because I know that there's going to be some things that we're going to have, they're going to have to spend money on and do on now. But if we do it that way, that if it's over a certain dollar a month, it has to just, you know, be, be put on the agenda. Hey, we spent one thousand eighty-eight dollars to extend open gym.
That wasn't a request, that, that was at least an informational thing that was put on the agenda.
Yeah, and, and I think that, that might be something that could maybe, you know, is it the right answer? I don't know. But, you know, maybe if they did tell us that they spent over X number of dollars, that it was put on there to, like you say, to inform everyone.
That's all I wanted to get out there is, you know, that sometimes these things do occur when making that decision, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mayor?
Okay, uh, mayor of council, can I just ask a question? I think just for staff's clarification. If, if there's an emergency of some kind that requires a vehicle repair that's crucial to Sean being able to get his work done? Is, is that, does that, does that need to go, does there need to be a meeting set up to approve something like that or just from a practical standpoint? So staff understands what that means, in particular Sean, I guess. So staff understands what that means, in particular Sean, I guess.
If you got an emergency breakdown, if the main business department's got an emergency breakdown or a water truck breakdown or something like that, I wanna see it fixed. I don't wanna wait a month.
Without hesitation.
Without hesitation.
Right. Same way with a water main break that costs $6,000 to repair.
Right.
We're gonna get it fixed.
Yeah, no, without hesitation, because waiting is not acceptable to me, incredibly bad.
That's, that's why I don't want the money changed.
Yeah, and, and I raise that, just, you know, for the council to think about those situations where things do need to be addressed right away. Um, we certainly don't want the city to be exposed to any liability for not doing something that needs to be done in the, in the judgment of the people who are the experts to do that work and, and know what needs to be done. So, um, I, you know, there, there may be circumstances that will come up like that, that, you know, whatever policy you're creating needs to be just very clear, well, the expectation is for staff in those circumstances.
If you're gonna have a water main break, what are you gonna do? Shut off half the people and no water? So we gotta wait a month for a council meeting, so you can get that fixed? We'll have to have it eight hours work.
We're talking about $2,000 on a water main break that says that, yeah, and we get it fixed. We get it fixed. Well, I also have to add that, that staff has been excellent at, their communication has a plate as to anything that, anything like that.
Since we had that water main break across from my place, how many thousand gallons of water did we lose on Sean? A lot.
Yep.
Before that got, you can't leave that running, shut half the people off with no water. It's not gonna happen. We gotta work with people, and that's all that's told. There's no if, or, ands, or buts.
Well, every expenditure comes through the council within the month anyway. It's on the council payable list.
All right, I just wanted everybody to be aware that sometimes in our meetings, that we're doing practice discussions. So we should go ahead and...
Some things get a little hard to handle.
We might have to, uh, put remarks in the paper, but Sean maybe can have a $2,000.
Well, just as long as we...
Sean can have a $1,000.
But as long as we keep the information on there.
So... Anything else, is there another?
We just have to go back to...
That's what's payable. Oh, we gotta finish this. Regional park information meeting will be held Thursday, February 13th at 7:00 PM at the community center. We need everybody's output on this regional park, park of town that we're looking at. And everybody should have got a flyer in the mail to come and repress, repress your president and input at the meeting. We'll have $25 gift cards drawing, you must be present, and then we appreciate everybody if they show up. One output. Okay, then we go back to the council table.
Um, I just have a couple of questions I need to ask. Why do you?
Yep.
What is this AMSAN community center supposed to be, 51646?
That is, um, paper towels, toilet paper, garbage bags, all this, um, hand soap, all this stuff.
Okay, and then scrubber for 26441?
They buy batteries for the scrubber so that it'll, it'll scrub it thoroughly. Or not leave streets, I should say.
Okay, and then, and I go along with Marie, our janitor, $7 or $10?
Um, we had her clean in here quite a bit in December because it was used a lot. We had a couple of different funerals in here, and we had a couple of Christmas parties. And there was a couple of different, um, like the VFW used, a couple of different organizations used it. So we wanted to clean for everybody, Christmas, you know, and the funerals.
Okay, and then what's this Minnesota current, like on the fourth quarter service connection for $7,000?
Every year in July, when you get your water bill, you'll see on the, a service, it's called a service connection fee on there. It's $6 and something, I think it's up to now. And everybody has to pay that service connection fee for their water. But the state of Minnesota bills us quarterly, so we submit it to the state quarterly. You pay it to us once a year and we submit it to the state quarterly.
If I can add to that, the state of Minnesota thinks that the groundwater is their water, so we have to pay to use it.
And we pay crossroads 8481?
That was a dog in impound, one of, we impounded a dog, so, and that's where they take them now, is to crossroads, so... If they don't get, if they get claimed, um, Crossroads collects our service, our fine, our city fine from the person and submits that back to us, but this one must not have gotten claimed, so we gotta pay for it.
Okay, and then...
I think we only had two all year this year.
And then, um, if I could get a copy of the community agreement, it was...
Let me just throw it in the basket.
That's it for me?
That's it. Okay, we have any acknowledgements?
We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, council table.
I'll make that motion to approve, council table, with that discussion I had.
I'll second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Johnson to approve the council table. How do you vote?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Johnson? Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carried by vote.
Mark, do we have the, of these flyers about government?
Um, at City Hall, sure.
Approximately how many?
I have nine.
Maybe a hundred?
I give you copies.
Because, um, I did a little experiment. I handed my wife a newsletter, and she went through the newsletter and never got it. Because this was the outside page, the way it was stapled together. She never got it. Michelle did the same experiment with her husband, and he did the same thing, so... I'm concerned, I, I'm willing to go out and walk the neighborhood some, pass some salt, and find data out of the meeting. I would do that.
You know, I just, I'm just...
I'll give you copies, secondly. It was, um...
Actually, they had a, right, colors on.
I was up at the lodge with them today, and, um, Teggy, who's lived in this town forever, knows nothing about the regional parks.
That's the other suggestion I was gonna make, that we take it to all the businesses in town in the nation.
Hanging up under walls?
Yep.
Yeah, so I just need to know how many...
Don't make me up, so I'll make a hundred.
I know, but I, I'm saying for my development, out of my area, just about everyone's...
No more of the...
Well, we have open forums, do you do that, Mike?
No.
I ain't got nothing for open forum.
Yeah, they need, now they do.
Wait, I'll let the, the class of the...
No. As you recall, I was here two years ago after the fact, so tonight I'm here as a courtesy, believe it or not. I'm letting you know that this year, February the 4th, it's a Tuesday night, it's caucus night, please do not hold any meetings. So I did bring a copy just in case someone says, "What is she talking about?" Minnesota statute 2028 point 19 states, no special taxi, district governing body, school board, county board commissioners, township board, city council may conduct a meeting after 6:00 PM on the day of a major political party precinct caucus. This also includes on substitution five, no public elementary or secondary school may hold a school-sponsored event after 6:00 PM. So again, here's a courtesy to remind you, no meetings on caucus night, so please attend your caucus. Thank you.
Thank you. Park meetings, everybody canceled there. All right.
Okay, how about acknowledging a person?
Uh, I have one. Uh, I do wanna acknowledge the fire department, Jason, Willie, Mike Martinton, and Jeff Daniels for, um, their response to hanging out to my dad's. Um, and me and the lead chair, Nelson's room. Um, Jeff Daniels was there, I, I couldn't remember his name, but I do wanna acknowledge them in courtesy that he gave my dad. He did a really good job, so I just wanna thank the faculty friends for being there.
I'll thank the all of you, Jeff. You all, that's all we do. Not a lot, but, and that's why.
I'd like to acknowledge the firemen for the year 2013, for all they did for the city and what they've been doing. Appreciate what they put out and their activities and how old it is. And they gotta go out and fight a fire, I know what they're going through because I've been through it.
I think it was, uh, Theater 16 below when you guys dropped off the calendar at my house that morning, so I even appreciated that. But I knew Jason would comment as a training exercise or something.
Actually, no, that's part of the relief, that's, that's going in, that's 100% going in time.
Appreciate it.
Any other acknowledging?
Yes, Mr. Murray, I'd like to acknowledge my staff. Um, and, uh, this winter's presented its own challenges and the six or seven hours that they were in on Christmas Day to make sure the roads were clean for everybody to travel safe, and acknowledge him for that.
Anybody else? We need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ben. I'd like to vote.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote aye, Mark?
Aye.
Both the best by a vote.